Gentlemen, welcome to the July 27, 2023, meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I can ask everyone to take a moment and please silence their cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'd like to start by introducing members of the board, starting at my far right or the audience's left. It's Jerry Patanis, who's an associate member. Next is Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member. Next is Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morrison, currently serving as the chair. Next is Suzanne Murphy, who is serving as our clerk. Next is Scott Peterson, who is the vice chairman. Last, we have Tony Petrucci, who is an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes, as well as the town zoning bylaws, in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public, and to allow a full and fair discussion of a project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read from the public announcement for the hearing and read the pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making personal or derogatory statements, and can include an opinion in favor or opposition, or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, should come to the podium. Please state your name and address. For the record, please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information is presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After a hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote of three to two is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed, as provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17. First up on this evening's agenda is public comment. This public comment is reserved for anything not specifically referenced on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public have any public comment for anything not on the agenda? Seeing no one. First up is our continuations this evening. First up is 61-20M EcoLand Development LLC, Zero Percival Road, Lot 4, T-Ticket, requesting the board to review revised plans for the comprehensive permit pursuant to a mediation assented to by the parties during the applicant's appeal on this hearing are the regular voting members.
I have three new letters I'd like to read in, please. Dear Board of Appeals members, do we want to be a town in the national news down the road with undrinkable water? Do you want to be responsible for this potential outcome? Long Pond and Mayor's Pond supply the drinking water for Trotting Park Road area and more. The proposed 40B on Percival Road sits on top of the aquifer and is not an appropriate place for this dense housing. If dense housing is concentrated in less affluent parts of town and in and around our water supply, dissemination lawsuits are possible. Thanks again. And then we had, oh, I should read the person's name. Susan Burnett. Then we have another letter from a Donald and Michelle Drew. Dear Zoning Board of Appeals, I am writing what I hope is my third and final letter in support of this project on Percival Road, and to reiterate some of the positive reasons why this should move forward. This is exactly what we need in town, a place where young families starting out can move to without having to worry about relocating as their family grows. Two, a place where kids would have a yard to play in, and with safety being the issue that it is, I find this much safer than sending kids to a community play area. Three, there are single-family homes with yards that take up far less space and population than other projects with the same amount of land being used. Three, I mean, four, we are direct to Butters, and we will have at least two houses about our property, and we have no concerns about safety, property value, or otherwise. Five, I bought my property 24 years ago, and just like anyone else, bought property in town with vacant land next to it, and it was sure one day would be developed in some way. That being said, we could not be happier that this is what has been chosen as the plan for consideration, knowing what could be built instead. Six, we have worked for the Falmouth schools for over 30 years, and in that time, we have seen the student population drop almost in half, and can't help but think that some of this is because of the difficulty finding and affording housing. And last, this project also meets other of the town's desired criteria within one and a half miles. There are all the amenities one could hope for, such as two grocery stores, department stores, a number of convenience stores, gas, food, urgent care, post office schools, and a bus stop. In closing, I would like to remind the board that housing of any kind, affordable or otherwise, is needed in Falmouth, and for that reason, we feel this project offers far more good than bad. And then we also had a long letter from Attorney Wall. That's all I had, sorry. Just wanted to get to the record.
For the applicant, good evening.
Okay, thank you for the record. Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. And Ed Montero, the principal, is also here. Our engineer, Jack Landers, could not be here. I just want to really go over what we have submitted and alert you to something which I apologize, as I just did to Noreen. I got, really, as I arrived at the parking lot, an email today from Jack Landers that was sent to Matt Cote, your peer reviewer on civil engineering, which responded to the additional points and questions that Matt Cote asked in his July 20 response to my response and to Jack Landers' earlier response. So I apologize, naturally. Being in the parking lot, I couldn't print it out, but it was sent directly to Matt Cote by our engineer. So I just forwarded it earlier tonight, about a half an hour ago, to Noreen and asked that it be part of the record. So that's one point. The things that I will point out briefly, and then happy to answer questions, and I think that we are satisfied with what we've submitted at this point and our answers. The question at the last hearing was to try to look at the actual layout of the Percival in the both locations related to the project and see what's in, you know, the public way. And we submitted a letter a week ago from Vanossen Associates, Jeffrey Dirk, dated July 14, 2023, that basically attached the plans that showed that the area where there is question about vegetation and the one or two mailboxes, that they can be cleared, they can be removed. The, I'm sorry, Trotting Park Road, that intersection where the sightline question had come up, it's in the public way. That vegetation in the mailboxes also can be removed. And I also had submitted last time the bylaw that the town has, which is interesting, which allows the select board to order people to take away any vegetation that blocks sightline. So we certainly believe that that's answered. So that's the first thing. Mr. Cote also asked, excuse me, that we update the waivers. We had discussed them last time, but I did submit, I forget if it was yesterday or this morning, I think this morning, I emailed to Mr. Cote and to Noreen the updated waivers, which, if you want me to go through it now, I can, but you may want to talk about waivers after other presentations tonight. So, Ed, if you want to just hand out copies later, if you want to go over it, this is the update. The updates are highlighted in yellow. As I said, there had originally been, I believe it was June 8, the Bill and Thomas Matt Cote review letter. I had sent in a response on June 23 without the benefit of Mr. Landers, our engineer, having his own contribution to the technical points, but I had submitted a response. I don't need to go over that again. And then, as I said, the June 20 letter, I'm sorry, then on June 23, we also submitted additional comments from Mr. Landers, our engineer. I might have the date wrong, but you got two things from us that responded further to the peer review letter. And then on June 20, Mr. Cote sent a letter again with additional points, and again, he had asked that the waivers be updated or clarified, which I have done. And again, I apologize that a further response from our engineer just came in literally about a half an hour ago, and I have forwarded that to Noreen. The only other thing that I would like to say at this point is, there had been questions about the buffer area that we believe is significant along Percival Road that is opposite where the Butters houses are, and the area was staked, the drainage basins out there had been staked. I don't know if any of you had a chance to go, but Ed can explain that further. We still believe that there's significant buffer in that area there. There's a significant strip, and on both sides of the drainage basin or area, there's no issue with having to put in any stormwater infrastructure. So Ed can say, come up in a minute. In a nutshell, again, with everything else that we've done, we certainly believe that we've answered the questions. You know, I'm not going to summarize what I said in my waiver request, which is further explanation of the waivers, either as to why they don't apply or how we believe we satisfy them in various respects. So I think it makes more sense to hold off and see if you want to talk about the waivers or anything else tonight. You may want to, at the end, as I would suggest, just close the hearing, and you certainly will deliberate on the waivers at a future meeting, or tonight if you so wish. So I'll just have Ed come up and briefly explain the plan that was submitted. I don't know if you have the need of putting it on the screen, Ed, but you can come up and explain that.
It needs a password.
No, I can do it all in here, but that's where it ends.
If you have your packages on you, when you look at the drainage for the road, the way it's designed is the drain engineer came off 10 feet off the property line, and then put the culvert in, and then you go into the infiltrators. And that is the only area that actually gets cleared out, and you still would have 10-foot buffer in front of that, and then the remainder of the property going to the east and the The east and the Ezra says the common area, that remains all wooded. Then again, you have another drainage area, which gets cleared up, but you have 10 feet from the lot line to where the drainage is put in. And then the remainder of the land, that also remains wooded and untouched. And then the only other area that you have the drainage is at the end of the road. You have your splash pad for your drainage at the end of the road.
So basically, just repeating what I said at the outside, that we do sincerely believe that we've submitted everything that we need to and should, and that we've answered the questions. Certainly, I can't speak for Mr. Cote, but especially with the filing that was very late, but I do believe that all of the concerns have been addressed. The ones that were addressed just late this afternoon are the very technical ones, and in essence, they either are already satisfied, or if Mr. Cote believes that perhaps there should be a condition, because they're really technical things, as long as a condition doesn't basically call into question whether or not the 12 units are approved, which we respectfully hope they will be naturally, you know, we would be satisfied with a condition that says certain more details to comply with the suggestions of Mr. Cote, would be acceptable, again, as long as it's carefully crafted, so that it doesn't call into question that the project, you know, itself is approved. So with that, we feel as though we've completed what we need to do and happy to answer questions now, or proceed any way you want.
Questions from the board. Start with you, Jerry.
No questions.
Frank?
Well, I took advantage of your offer to go out and take a look at the stake-in, so I did go out there. I appreciate your staking out the drainage. Now, there was a comment, I think, either at the site visit that we had a couple of weeks ago, or perhaps at one of the meetings here, that the area over the drainage structures or subterranean structures will have to be kept clear of vegetation. Is that correct?
Yeah, normally what's done when you have drainage, the area that's been backfilled, usually you have grass grow on that. I did speak with Jack Landers Carley, because usually you try not to plant anything over, like a soil absorption system, so you don't have roots going into it. But he says if you have to, you can have some type of low-laying shrubs if you needed to cover that up. You just can't plant like trees or anything for the vines to go into the ground and get into the system.
Okay, so then the effective buffer, then, is the 10 feet between the edge of the structure and Percival Road, at least at that dot point. Everywhere else, it's 20 feet?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Mark?
The white flags on 230, whatever, the house on the corner, those indicate the town's layout?
No, the white flags usually, they must be doing some, the white flags are for dig-safe. When you mark out for dig-safe, if you're doing some type of...
They're...
The homeowner did it. So I'm assuming that it's dig-safe. Whenever we have to mark anything out for digging, excavating, or whatever, you have to put white flags, so when dig-safe comes out, they know the area that you're working in.
Well, it wouldn't make sense that those white flags were for any, I thought it appeared that they were the road layout, because the majority of them are just slightly behind the growth that we're all concerned with at, you know, sightline coming to Trotting Park Road.
What, white little flags?
Yeah, little white flags.
Yeah, I saw, they were going, they were going actually...
They go right down, kind of in a...
They were actually were going like, right here.
They were behind the...
That's...
No, no, they were, yeah, they were going in the back, but they were also going in the front, and all but one of those trees were in front of the white flags. That's my, therefore, my assumption was that that the town's layout?
No.
Did engineering go there and lay out?
Absolutely not.
But how, who's going to lay this out so we can determine if these trees are on the neighbor's property or in the town layout, because that's certainly a concern.
If you saw the stake that's in the corner, that's where the edge of the property is. So if there's any of that little tree where it says, they put that little sign on Percival, says Percival Road, it was painted on, that's on my property.
Yeah, I saw that, and there's a yellow tape there, exactly. But again, my concern is, when you pull up to Trotting Park Road, there's all that vegetation in the front of, I'm sorry, I forget their name, begins with an S, Manuel's daughter's house.
Yeah, you're talking about right here.
Yeah, and there's, it appears...
That's, well, the drainage was marked out on, when you first come in. When you come in off Trotting Park Road and look to the right, the drainage was marked out.
Let me, how about this way? Where is the road layout in relation to all those shrubs that we're concerned about? Because that way, we can make the determination whether they're on town property or on their property.
If I may answer that, that is very clearly shown on the plan that's attached to Jeffrey Dirk's July 14 letter. He has attached that, and he's identified where the trail remove existing vegetation located within public right-of-way. He has a sight distance labeled, again, the existing right-of-way is identified with the arrow and the red notes.
Oh, the way those appear, that those white flags are the road layout.
I have the...
I can't answer that, and I can't so.
Well, they seem to mimic the line that you have here for road layout. So all, again, then, all but the one large pine tree that, to the left of the driveway at the house on 235, or whatever, I can't even remember the name, are in the road layout, and they can be removed.
That's correct. That would be on my property. That is correct.
And I'm not sure, although I've been up there naturally, but I'm not sure as to the quote-unquote "large pine tree." I did discuss that specifically with Mr. Dirk, and he said that that is also within the right-of-way. It's very clearly not, then, it's a misunderstanding, but certainly everything that we believe has been questioned as to possibly blocking the sight distance can be removed. That's what his letter says.
Okay, well, it appears that one tree isn't as I read it, but...
Again, you know, I just, in, you know, 25, 30 words, repeat what he said as to that. If that's the case, if that tree can't be removed, although again, your bylaw gives you the right to do it. You know, Jeff's explanation of that is, it's not like constantly standing in one location, and that the only place your vision is looking is at that tree. You know, he said, the reality is, there's motion, so it's only very little time when a car will be blocked by that tree. So again, I'm just quoting, in essence, what he said.
Well, those are my largest concern. Now, where the mailboxes are, there are four of them that are in the layout, as I understand. Is there any possibility of removing any of those trees behind the mailbox to improve the sightline down the road? Because there was another accident there a couple of weeks ago, and I've witnessed, you know, accidents there, and I mean, safety's a major concern.
I mean, I guess two-part answer. You know, if the vegetation or trees are within the public right-of-way, then they certainly can be, and that can be a condition. And even if they're on private, that local bylaw, which, you know, I certainly believe you can have that ordered, because you're sitting in the shoes of the select board, this being a 40B comprehensive permit, so you assume the role of all other boards. So, you know, that's, I certainly believe that that could take place.
Okay, I have another question. Again, coming from your development, pulling up to Trotting Park and looking left and right, what if the owner of the house on the corner decides to put up a fence that obstructs the view? Can that be limited?
Again, you have bylaws that if your obstruction coming onto a road is obstructed, it can be removed. And it happened right at my house, where the town came in. I have a rhododendrum and a tree, one on Harrington Street and one on Montauk Street. I got pictures of them coming onto my yard, clearing that up, and I asked what it was for, and he says, it's in the line of sight. And the town actually came in about two weeks ago.
For the record, Mr. Montero has just drawn photographs of vegetation that's being removed.
Because...
This is where I live, in the corner of Harrington and Montauk, that was the town coming in, bringing the rhododendrum and the trees on Montauk. In the summertime, they come at least once a month to clear it up.
But isn't that town property?
I'm sorry?
That's town property.
The town, DPW comes in, DPW came in...
You're asking about private property.
That's, and that was on my property.
Yeah, so...
Well, it is private property.
Yeah, because I'm gypsy-concerned if we had all the offending foliage removed, and then somebody went and put up a fence. It kind of negates the whole thing, and, you know, there's no denying it's a dangerous intersection, and we need to make it as safe as possible.
I just want to say this guardedly, because, you know, I don't know the exact location of the house that you just used as an example, but we think that that house is so far away from the so-called sight triangle, it's not an exact triangle, but the sight view area as shown on the plan, that something in that area wouldn't be an issue anyway. So, you know, we have both that protection, as well as the fact that the bylaw that we just discussed would give the town the right to take care of that.
Well, fine, I think that's my major concern there, Noreen.
Understood. Thank you.
So thank you for addressing the issues about the drainage, making sure that was clarified with markings and so on, answering questions tonight. Thank you for the issues about the site, safety issues. My concern is the submission, we've been asking for the update of the waivers, and for a submission to come in the day before the hearing. Candidly, Mr. Freeman, I don't know if I'll be able to close tonight without giving our peer engineer the chance to review and us the chance to digest, but I'm going to continue with the board questioning. Stan?
I went there yesterday. I am here, because it took me about 20 minutes to pull out onto Trotting Park in the middle of the day. It was scary, actually scary. To the left, there's a huge shrub, like your rhododendrum, only taller. It's like, I don't even know what kind of, it looks like a weed, and it blocks your view on the left, and the mailboxes are smack in the way. I don't know what the procedure is to, are you only going to move four and leave the rest? Is that the game plan? Because the mail truck still has to go there somehow, I would assume.
It's not that you're removing them. What would happen is, the chief of police would meet with the town engineer, they would look at the line of sight, if there is something in the way. So if you have two of the three mailboxes, which Mr. Vanis explains in his letter, it actually would just be moved back in front and back of the other mailboxes, and any of the other shrubs that were in the line of sight would be removed. And the town has already done that about two years ago. I think I showed you the pictures, when the town came in and straightened out the sidewalk, and there was a chain-link fence that was there, and that also was removed. That was right there, that the, and the town removed all of that.
Oh, that's looking down the other way, okay.
And...
I just don't even know where the mail truck's going to pack. The mail truck's going to get clocked.
No, I mean, if anything would benefit the mail trucks, if you moved the first three back, the mail truck would be coming into Trotting Park Road and not, well, onto Percival Road, not onto Trotting Park Road. It would be coming in and not staying out. The mail truck actually comes down Percival Road when she puts the mail in. She doesn't stay in the street and puts the mail in the boxes.
I thought I saw like 15 boxes myself. Maybe they walked to them. I didn't see the mailman, so. And then the other question I had was the retention basins. When we did the site visit, you did tell some of the humans that were there that you were going to put trees around it, and I even thought to myself, I don't think that's allowed. And so what kind of safety precautions are you going to put around these for children or whatnot?
Are you talking about all the drainage?
Yeah.
The drainage that's in the common areas underground, so there's nothing that anybody can fall into. It's not like a retention pond where you have drainage.
Just like gravel?
It's, no, it's, what happens is, on the system that we're using, the infiltrators, they're infiltrators, and you put, they'll be five feet deep, five to six feet deep. You set your catch basin, and then your culverts go in into the infiltrators. So everything is underground and buried. The only thing that comes up is like any other drainage you have in town, is where you see the catch basin, where all runoff from the road goes into the catch basin. So that's all underground. The splash pad that's at the end of the road, right here, will have a fence around it.
That one will be fenced. I couldn't find those stakes for the life of me, on the fire truck section.
Well, if you found what it said...
I'm sure it was just...
No, no, it said end of road, and then you had to look. They had two for where the T was, and then it went back. It was...
Yeah, I couldn't, I only had my phone for the map, which wasn't a smart move either, but I couldn't find them for the life of me, but I did find the other ones. Yeah, I was, I thought the retention basin was going to be more of a retention basin.
No, it's, it's actually drainage. Everything's on the ground, and then it's, you grow grass over it.
Okay, so the fire department turnaround will be fenced.
The catch basin... The catch basin for...
Just the catch basins themselves?
Yes. The T turnaround has to be left open for emergency.
Okay. I'm just still real concerned about Trotting Park myself. I couldn't believe it when I tried to get out of there yesterday. I was like, "You've got to be kidding me." It's tough. I mean, I know it always has been, but it's just tough. Anyway, that's all I have.
Scott?
Just looking forward to our peer review, engineer and his comments. I think quite honestly, the site review questions that we've been banding around are good for the people of Percival and they're good for potentially the developers. So it's, to me, quite honestly, a win-win that we're kind of going through this process. Because it is difficult. So I'm open to listening to our peer review on the 38 items that we've had on our list.
Tony?
I agree with Mr. Fenner in some of the comments here. I was there yesterday. It is extremely difficult coming out of Trotting Park Road. My question is this. I think I heard earlier that when you look at Vanessa and Associates' sight line review, part of that sight line actually crosses over the property of 231 Trotting Park. I think I heard that it is the town's responsibility to keep that clear on private property. I'd like to know who is responsible. Once you are gone as the developer, who is actually responsible for keeping that sight line clear? Who actually reports it? Who's watching over it? Who's monitoring that? Because that is extremely difficult to get out of.
Under that bylaw that we have talked about and that I handed in the copy last time, it could be a condition of this permit that the homeowners association monitor that and report to the, I forget if it starts with the police chief, but there's a process there that would instigate the review by the authorities, I believe the police chief and then the select board, to take action if they so saw fit. So that is a suggestion and I think it responds to your question, which I understand.
I think it should be a condition of that. It's very, very difficult and something that will be difficult to manage in years to come. I have, thank you very much, I have, is, do we have anyone from Beals and Thomas here today? Something that hasn't come up very much, at least I don't think so, but you're asking for a waiver on it and I'm coming late to this. I understand that. But I want to ask Beals and Thomas with regard to the fire turnaround, the dead-end street. In the, I think it is subdivision control law 305-24, paragraph D, 2 and 3, dead-end streets. It says the maximum length of a dead-end street not to exceed 500 feet, except it does. It says the turnaround, or the T turnaround, the width should be at least a minimum of 18 feet. I don't think it is. I'm not sure. And that's the width of it and the length should be a minimum of 80 feet long and I don't think that is either. The curb radii, you brought this up, I think, in your comment, Mr. Cote, that you don't understand why they can't make that radius 25 feet. My concern with regard to all of that is, this is fire safety. There are going to be, what, 12 homes there, I think it is? And if you're minimizing what the town has asked for for fire safety, how do we protect, how does the town adequately protect? Now, I understand that the fire department basically said, "Well, it's okay." But you've truly minimized this T turnaround area. And I, Mr. Cote, I need to ask Mr. Cote this. Is, are we diminishing the safety, the fire safety of the community by allowing this?
Well, typically, typically, as we do...
Can you go up to the thing so they can hear you on TV?
Yep. For the record, Matt Cody, Beals and Thomas, we're the peer review engineer on behalf of the board for this project. As we know, usually in a situation, we review projects all over the state. If there was an issue like this, we would note it just to bring it to everybody's attention. And then it's typically deferred to the fire department. If the fire department feels it's adequate, we really don't have a say in whether, you know, if they think it's fine, we can't tell them it's not fine. If they're the ones that are going to have to, you know, respond or serve or, so it's, that's typically how we leave it. So we'd note there's an issue, we'd ask for the fire department's input and it goes from there. In this case, we've been told it seems like the fire department is satisfied with what's being provided.
So we're satisfying the town's fire department. Is there any violation of state fire code involved here?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. I thank you very much.
Anything else? Any other follow-up? Public comment?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick, if I may, to your point, because I do understand and respect when you get something last minute and I did send it in today. It was not deliberate, but part of my thinking was...
Not saying it was.
No, 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 I understand, but just so you know, I mean, there aren't that many changes and in my mind, you know, I got the request again, the July 20th letter in my mind from the last hearing. I thought that, you know, I had explained it and with hindsight, certainly I should have done it sooner. But I was away the end of the week when the July 20th letter came in and I should have done it earlier this week. But also just for everybody's edification, it's not, you know, it is what it is. It's true. You got it today. But there really aren't that many changes and my expectation was, although certainly you can discuss anything you want tonight, that, excuse me, whenever the hearing is closed, you'll see what I wrote and it would be something that you deliberate on. So, you know, that's why I think that it, you know, is really not deleterious that it came in today. So, thank you.
Public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Wall and I'm an attorney. I have an office in Sandwich and I'm representing three of the Butters. You've seen me many times. I'm going to try to keep my comments short and hopefully mostly new. I'd like to start by talking about the sight triangles. My clients believe that there are still fundamental issues with the sight triangles. First of all, it's undisputed that they're needed. It's also undisputed that they're currently obstructed. The report that was provided on July 14th says that they can be made compliant if the mailboxes are moved and the vegetation is cleared. But there's some important language in that letter that says, "Subject to obtaining the necessary rights, permits and approvals." And this is where I think we differ with regard to the applicant. The applicant has cited section 199 and the way I understand the argument is as the zoning board sits in its comprehensive permit granting authority, it sits in the shoes of other town boards and can grant all the permits necessary for the project. And the case law in the language of chapter 40B is very clear. What that authority pertains to is permits and approvals. And you can also override local regulations like density and setbacks and things like that. But section 199 is neither. It's not a local regulation that regulates development. It also is not a permit or approval. There's no application process and there's no approval process. It's a discretionary authority that resides with the Board of Appeals. And so our contention is, is that with all due respect, the zoning board does not have authority to grant as part of this comprehensive permit, permission for the developer to go onto other people's property and cut vegetation, nor does the board have the authority to order the selectmen to exercise discretionary authority that's not a permit or approval. There's also another sub-issue here with regard to where is this vegetation? I saw the board with interest talk about that and the plan was referred to by the engineering supplemental plan that was submitted. I'm not an engineer, but my review of this plan is, is that it's not stamped by a surveyor. I don't think it's based on a survey. In fact, the reference to the existing layout says, "Existing right of way," and then it says, "TYP," which I think means typical. So in other words, I think this was taken off another plan and superimposed. And so therefore, I would suggest to the board that there's not adequate information before you to determine exactly where this vegetation is in relation to the road layout and in relation to private property. Furthermore, if you do look at the plan, assuming that it was correct, some of the vegetation is in the layout and some of it is on private property. About four of the mailboxes are in the layout and about six or more of them are on private property. So that ties back to the whole argument the developer has made to you is, oh, we can, it's either in the layout or we can use section 199 to clear it. And we disagree with that. We do not think that the board can do that. So we therefore think the sight triangles remain a problem and they're a real problem. There were accidents at this intersection before this hearing process began. And I attached to my letter, I'm sure you all read it in the newspaper anyway, there was a bad accident there on July 6th as well. And incidentally, the description of Mr. Montero's property, when it talks about the bounds, the road names have changed in this location over time. Percival Road used to be called the Blind Wood Road, indicating that it's on kind of a blind spot. And I would suggest that that was probably for a reason. The second quick point I want to make about the road, going back to the intersection of Percival and the new development internal road. When the traffic engineer was here last, he really focused his comments on the sight triangles and didn't really mention about the intersection. The argument has been made that it's safer than the last time around because it's been moved 47 or 57 feet away from where Percival Road curves down. But the waiver request still contains a waiver from, as Mr. Petrucci noted, the radius requirement. It's section 305-24B5, waiver of intersection radius of 25 feet on the entry to the private way. This was the same waiver that was asked for last time. So although the intersection has moved and the argument has been made that it's safer, it still has the fundamental design flaw that the road had the last time. And in finding number 27 of the board's denial decision, the board had concerns with that problem and said, "The board is concerned about the applicant's inability to meet minimum standards designed for safety purposes." So our contention is, is it's still got the same problem. With regard to the turnaround, the board the last time had an interesting kind of practical observation that this development is going to be largely affordable and therefore presumptively, there's going to be families with kids and probably some teenage drivers. And there's no provision for parking anywhere in the development. And so the board was concerned the last time around that although there's this turnaround shown on the plan, it's probably going to get filled up with cars and it's not going to be available in the event of a fire. And the developer's response to that was, "Well, we'll put up some signs." And so I think that the board last time around was not persuaded that it was still a safe design. Two more brief comments. With regard to the drainage and the buffer zone. So the developer started off by saying it was going to be a 20-foot wide, undisturbed buffer. But when we brought to the attention that this drainage is going to be, it's now clear that that's going to be cleared and it can't be planted with anything that grows on top of it. I would also suggest to the board that the hole that is dug for this is not going to be precise. It's cited on the plan 10 feet from the property line, but when you dig a hole, you have to dig it bigger than the thing that you're putting it in. So I would suggest to you that the buffer zone in this particular area is going to be less than 10 feet. And the two drainage structures together are 135 feet long and then there's some infrastructure in between them. I didn't have a scale, but it looks like another 10 or so feet. So we're talking about 150 feet of area that's going to be basically denuded and not a buffer zone as represented. Lastly, it seems that the developer is getting ready to close the hearing and has suggested to you that all the information is before you. I brought this to the attention of the board last time. I didn't see the developer address this. When this process started, he had the property under purchase and sale for $200,000 and he provided a pro forma showing all the expenses and how much profit he was going to make on this project. But since then, he purchased the land for $50,000, which is a lot less than the $200, and he has not yet submitted a new pro forma. And why is that important? Because ultimately, this request for waiver that has been submitted, waivers plural, the board has to go through the process, as you well know, of weighing what are called local concerns and local needs. And local concerns and local needs are all the things that this town has put into its bylaws and its regulations to create the character that Falmouth is, what Falmouth is. And this developer is asking for waivers for those under chapter 40B and the board has to go through a balancing test to say, "What's more compelling? The need for affordable housing to support the waiver or is the local need or local concern paramount and we're not going to grant that waiver?" Inherent in that process is understanding the profit. And so Mr. Montero has not yet revised his pro forma to reflect the fact that he bought five acres for $50,000. Those are our comments. We thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Mark?
Sorry.
The, your concerns about the drainage structures and the planting, would you be satisfied with Mr. Swain's suggestion of a fence along the property line?
I'd have to talk to my clients about that. I mean, we have had internal conversations and we're somewhat curious why he's not putting the drainage structures under the road. I talked to an engineer and I'm informed that that's possible to do that. That would leave the 20-foot buffer available. Because, mind you, as I understand these infiltrators, as Mr. Montero called them, they're not actually a drain on the surface. It's where all the drain water flows into and then percolates into the ground. So they can be under the road. We think that would be a better, better solution.
Well, if there was a fence there, why would you care? Wouldn't it be much, I believe it's cheaper to do it the way he wants. He hasn't changed his drainage, amount of drainage structures and he has reduced the amount of lot coverage, roof lines and everything. So I guess that's a question to be answered. Would a fence satisfy the neighbors?
I certainly, I'd have to talk to my clients because I represent them. I don't live there. It's a question of aesthetics. I mean, certainly a fence would be...
A simple solution.
It'd be a screening certainly, but I think it's, you know, it's a very rural area. I think that, I can say this, I think that, I know that my clients all enjoy living in that rural part of town where it's heavily wooded and quiet. So looking at woods versus a fence, I think is preferable, but I certainly could talk to my clients about that.
I guess in the same vein, we could condition a potential approval that the 20-foot buffer is to remain.
You could. You definitely could. And I should add too that one of the concerns the board had the last time on this particular issue was that the project applicant had not submitted a plan for what comes after. And so that certainly could be apropos of that condition. You know, put it under the road so the 20-foot remains or put a fence or plant some more, plant some arbrevidae or something like that within that 10-feet area to screen it.
Good fences make good neighbors.
Any additional board questions? Other public comment?
Just about mailboxes. Are you going to have mailboxes at each dwelling? Is that the game plan?
I don't know. I think, I'm not sure. Usually a post office requires like a gang design.
You either have the gang box or the individual mailboxes.
Is the gang showed on the plan?
The, I'm not sure what he put on there.
I didn't see it myself.
If there would be a gang box, it would be in this area right here.
That's where people, there's room for them to park there. There's room for parking there.
What do you mean by parking?
To get out and get your mail.
Yeah, oh, yeah. But I prefer, I think it looks nicer if they have an individual mailbox. We've done a couple of the 40Bs in town. I just think it's nice to have your own mailbox and put it right at the end of the...
That's what I thought you had said another time, but I couldn't remember.
Exactly. But I want to get back to the drainage. The drainage is underground. I mean, and it's been designed by the drainage engineer. I'm sure Mr. Cote can give his input. I don't want the drainage underneath the road. If there's anything that happens, now you're digging up the road. The idea to have it where it's in an open area, if there's any issues, you have access to getting to it. So that's, you know, the way the drainage is designed from the drainage engineer and everybody else that reviews it when they look at the plans. So just to say, you know, you want to put it underneath the road, you're changing the whole concept of what a drainage engineer designed.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of other things in response to Mr. Wall's comments. And also on the drainage, that was the last topic. It is also true that the length there is over 1,000... It is also true that the length there is over a thousand feet. It's thirteen hundred feet. So it's a very small portion that would have less of a natural buffer. So, and then the other thing, which I would say, and I didn't talk privately with Ed, but if you're concerned about that, the idea of a fence may be a reasonable condition, at least along the area where the infiltration is, not the whole length of the road, but where the infiltration is, that may be a perfectly legit solution. Let's just leave it for now. Couple of other points. The second to last point Mr. Wall said is simply clearly wrong. What the purchase price was when it was actually sold is irrelevant to the board in terms of the why's and wherefore's. But I will say this, in terms of how we tied it into the 40B approval, that's simply not the way it works. The pro forma regulations, the approval regulations for site eligibility, project eligibility with the state agency, very clearly dictate, there's a guideline and rules for all the subsidizing agencies, that an appraisal is done to determine what the fair market value of the land is as of right at the time of the application. And regardless of whether a developer would pay more than that or whether he pays less than what was determined at the time of the project eligibility letter, has the reasonable fair market value at that time without the benefit of a 40B permit, that is what sticks with the project throughout. So it has no bearing on revising a pro forma either now or at the time of final approval, should we get approved and go back to the final step with the subsidizing agency for final approval. They don't care what the price was. Sometimes a developer pays more than what the agency determined was that value, the so-called site acquisition value. Sometimes they pay less. So it's simply irrelevant and the determination of the board, of the subsidizing agency would stand. And I don't really need to belabor it, but the case law with the Amesbury case is very clear that that's the domain of the subsidizing agency in any case. The other thing that I would say, his starting points about your bylaw that allows enforcement of vegetation cutting or other site distance blocking, I just respectfully disagree. The power under 40B is very broad. And in the definitions of local requirements and regulations, at the beginning of the 40B regulations themselves, the 40B regulation states that term means "all local legislative, regulatory or other actions which are more restrictive than state regulations, if any, including local zoning and wetland ordinances or bylaws, subdivision and Board of Health rules and other local ordinances, bylaws, codes and regulations, in each case which are in effect at the time of the project's application." So I respectfully disagree that there's any concern about what the board can do with that regard. I think those are the only things I wanted to respond to. Thank you. One more question. Mr. Montero, one more question, please.
Mr. Wall brought up parking and looks like the lots are somewhere, I don't know, one hundred and twenty-two feet to one hundred and thirty-five feet deep. But obviously you have the homes running pretty close, pretty similar to the road layout. Do you know, there's not a scale here. How long are the driveways roughly? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, the driveway is probably from the main road going in to the houses approximately thirty-five feet.
Okay. So for normal cars, seventeen feet. There's a couple of cars that could potentially be...
Yeah, and I think when we were walking the land, I mentioned that from where the property line went through where the houses were, it's like ninety-five feet back.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any additional public comment? Mark?
How long is the length along Percival Road there? Where we're speaking about a fence where the drainage are. Did you say it was fifteen hundred feet?
That's the length of the total road.
No, I mean the total road, yeah. From, you know, the boundary. If Mr. Swain's fence was... How long is that?
Right there, move the cursor.
This right here?
Yeah, all the way from one end to the other. How long is that?
Thirteen, about twelve hundred, thirteen hundred feet.
Twelve hundred feet.
If I may, certainly it's your prerogative and a condition, but I'm not sure why a fence would be required for the entire length because of the concern had been that twenty-foot seems okay, but that we're dealing with twenty feet because of the infiltration systems. That to me is weird logically to be a fence, but that's just my thought. Thank you.
Additional public comment?
Jason Swain, 149 Percival Road, Director Butter. I guess if this does get passed, I personally would like to see a fence the whole way. I don't think just over the drainage is going to be enough. I know some previous 40Bs, you guys have like Beach Plum Place and, well, sorry, Beach Plum Drive and Brick Kiln Place. I believe they have a fence around their projects that you guys had them do. So I would like to see the same thing here if it does get approved. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Your engineer is here as well.
Again, for the record, Matt Cody with Bills &amp; Thomas. Our most recent letter we issued was July 20th. And we still, we have made some progress, as discussed, but we do still have, there's still some concerns out there. And as mentioned, we had some concerns regarding the waivers. That waiver list was provided today. It seems like a lot of that has been clarified. But again, we kind of defer to the board or, you know, we typically don't, I mean, we can give, you know, some insight or, you know, if we had issues with any of them, but regarding, you know, sidewalks on different sides of streets and curbs, we would typically defer to the board on whether that's something they're willing to accept or not. It's not a real technical detail. Regarding the landscape buffer and the drainage systems, that's something we did note and something we'd still like to see, yeah, further clarify whether it's a fence or not. As was previously mentioned, those systems appear to be about nine feet deep and only ten feet from the property line. So the expectation is that, you know, that even though it would be ten feet, that excavation's probably a little bit wider. So therefore you're losing more of that vegetation in those two areas. And to note, there's two of these. So I think they said it's roughly a hundred and fifty feet, but twice. So you're talking about three hundred feet of the overall thirteen hundred that would be impacted in those areas. And even to the extent that those systems are also over, even if the system's ten, you know, making it up, the system's ten feet wide, the detail calls for, you know, that excavation to be at least twelve feet wide because there's a stone envelope that goes around it. So you have a foot on either side of that. So, you know, you're ten feet away, now you're nine feet away and now it's nine feet deep. So now, you know, the expectation is you're going to have something far less than that, you know, ten-foot buffer that's going to be able to remain. It's likely going to be impacted. Obviously, there's been discussion about the site distances. We don't necessarily have a concern. We have, obviously there's concerns about, you know, once the mailboxes are moved, once vegetation's removed, we don't necessarily have a concern. But obviously there does seem to be some coordination there, you know, again with rights and who can do what and when, but that's still out there. And then as far as the subdivision itself, as I mentioned, you know, they're requesting waivers for the road length and, you know, the style of curbing and those kinds of aspects. There was a question about the hydrant spacing. That was, again, we received some information, again, this afternoon. That seems to have been corrected or will be corrected. We haven't received new plans. We just, you know, received a verbal response, a written response. And then there's also, I guess getting back to the landscape buffer issue, there hasn't been an overall landscape plan provided. There's been, you know, a landscape plan provided for like a kind of around each house and like the shrubbery and different things that would be like at the houses, but not a plan overall. Again, that would address the buffer zones. And again, as part of your regulations, there's street trees that are required. Also each yard would require some street trees. The applicant has indicated they will do that, but again, it's not on a plan anywhere or we haven't seen it. So it's just something you'd want to keep in mind moving forward.
I thought that the white flags there were the road layout. They seem to mimic it according to these plans. I would be much more comfortable if I could see where the actual road layout is. Who does that?
Yeah, I mean, it could be staked by their, you know, it would obviously need to be staked by a surveyor. And I guess at this point...
Is that the towns, the engineering, where they lay out their own road or who's?
I would tend to, it'd probably have to be something you'd have to have the applicant do, at least on their property, like where that would fall. Or that would be typical, I suppose.
That's my major concern. I mean, and as I say, I've witnessed accidents there. And certainly that shrubbery's all got to go. Nobody wants to see anybody seriously injured or die. And I mean...
Yeah. No, I haven't been out, I haven't been out to see the recent flagging or, you know, the recent staking that was done. I was out, you know, probably at this point, probably two months ago. But I did note that there's that large shirt to the left. There's, yeah, I mean, there's, and obviously the mailboxes still remain. So I mean, even though these are situations that can be corrected, they just haven't been. And there's no clear path of how they will be.
I have a question. Does each individual house of this project need waiver for frontage?
Yes. And they were kind of requesting that like globally, like, you know, like, yeah. Yeah, I mean, typically, I'd have to double check. I mean, the zoning for this, you know, is like eighty thousand square feet. So I mean, of the twelve houses they're proposing, you would be able to get two if they complied.
Sorry. In your review, you have about thirty-eight items that you have in the document. I guess how much, how many of those are you aligned with now with the applicant that you feel that there's sufficient information that you're in agreement with them on? Is it twenty of the thirty-eight or?
Yeah, I would say there's certainly a lot of progress has been made. I mean, yeah, as far as technically, like technical kind of engineering nuts and bolts, I think we're in a good spot. It's more like getting into waivers and the site distances and the kind of more, you know, touchy feely things about how you want to see addressed. But as far as like, you know, again, hydrant spacing and different things like that, we're fairly satisfied.
Yeah, that was nice to see since our last meeting that there's some pretty substantial movement. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, I guess I should, it's in our letter, but we met with the applicant on July 14th to go over some of these issues. So a lot of stuff was like worked out at that point.
So do you just need some additional time to review what just recently came in, I guess is?
Yeah. But I mean, just, I mean, the information that came in today, I mean, wasn't substantial in regards to like, you know, swaying things one way or the other, just some kind of clarifying points. And again, the waiver list was cleaned up.
I just, just a comment. Eddie said that he preferred mailboxes at each individual property. And I think that that should almost be a condition because if we can lessen the amount of traffic around that thing, you're, it's just going to be safer.
Right. And the reference to kind of like the gang box and like somebody stopping and getting the mail and having somebody try to get around them and, yeah, I mean, it's probably... Again, we typically don't get in a mailbox. That's more of kind of a postmaster call. I mean, I suppose, I guess, I mean, the way that they're set up now, I mean, I guess at some point there was a, you know, they didn't want to go down that road. So I don't know why they would want to now, but again, we would defer to like the postmaster and like, you know, the post office and that like. But yes, in theory, having them go down the street, it'd be much better. Or getting that box into the actual development as opposed to being like on the intersection there would be.
From our perspective, it's a safer and a superior idea.
Sure.
Any additional questions? I think the board would like to proceed. Full discussion.
I'd like to not close yet. I'd like to hear more information from our person.
I don't think it's appropriate to close tonight. I got my, my email came in like four thirty this afternoon. I didn't even get it till quarter of six. But I, for me, the most important thing we have to do is consider the request for waivers. I want to go through each one because it's my understanding that when we do a 40B, we vote on the waivers individually.
Absolutely.
So I want to be prepared for that and I'm not at this point, although I appreciate the work that has been done on it. But it's, I think, incumbent upon us to go through them in detail because some of them really reflect on very serious issues, particularly water quality and environmental issues. And I think we just have to do our homework and we need some time to do it.
I didn't even get a chance to read all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your ratification, I think some attorneys might say, "Sorry, I said I think the hearing should be closed and that's it." And I don't operate that way. I do think we've substantially answered, but especially with Mr. Cote's comments, which of you was positive. And the fact that both as to the waivers with what I just sent today as well as, I think more importantly, Mr. Landers. I can see that you're, you know, taking everything seriously and you've expressed appreciation for the progress that has been made. I would certainly hope that just one more hearing would be okay, but just so you don't feel as though, you know, there's any contentiousness with me or my client, it seems to me as though you would be more comfortable with one more hearing and we're fine with that.
Date wise, we're looking at Noreen.
So September 7 would be optimal for your schedule currently? That works for...
That date works. Fortunately, it's right before my September vacation. Is there any chance of a date in August, a little before that? I mean, I know it's almost, it's almost August 1st and it will take two or three weeks anyway for Mr. Cote and Mr. Landers, et cetera. But if it's possible to, you know, have a week or two sooner, maybe that would be possible.
So the other possibility, when we do have a meeting scheduled for the 24th, we already have items set for that agenda. So that would be, I guess, the only downfall would be the amount of time.
Port feeling? I don't mind a marathon session every now and then. I'd prefer not to have them, but I don't, you know, it happens. Let's just do it.
Let's do it on the 24th. Make a motion to move to the 24th.
Scott for a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
So that would just be submissions should be in by the 15th if there's anything. Because I think last minute, there's not a chance for people to review.
I totally agree.
Any discussion needed?
Well, one thing, and I don't know, I think Mike brought it up, is the board wanting the roadway to be laid out by a surveyor? I don't think the town will do it. So it's going to probably be the 40B engineer. What was your suggestion, Mark?
It would make me more comfortable because it's...
When we were walking on the property, when we first started off, you had the center of the road of the line coming in and then the stakes are still going in. They're all...
I'm talking about the town's road layout to be indicated.
That's, that's not, I mean, I'm not following you on that.
If the vegetation is in the town's road layout, we know that the town can remove them and alleviate our safety concerns. Not knowing where the town road layout is, we can't determine if in fact that's going to occur.
I certainly understand the question and respect that. So why don't we leave it like this? I just don't know the logistics and whether Mr. Landers team or somebody could do it. We'll do our best if we can possibly get it staked. We'll alert you all through Noreen. And again, the only reason I'm not promising is I just don't know the logistics. But I hear you.
Motion to continue the 24th made in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up on our continuations, we have 10522 Bowen, trustees of 102 Grand Ave Falmouth, requesting a modification of existing permits 110-15 and 37-21 to remove condition number two of the special permit of number 110-15 and increase the total lot coverage. Property is under an enforcement order by letter dated September 14th, 2022. Additional... Nothing new in here, right Asha? Updated plans. Record or fact, Mr. Finnert is not participating on this as a board member. And for the applicant, good evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First, just to assuage some of your concerns regarding August 24th, I can tell you that I have at least one hearing that will probably not be proceeding that night. not be proceeding that night. So, hopefully, not too much of a marathon session.
Thank you for that.
I will do my best to be brief, to be honest with you. This is the last thing standing between me and a three-day weekend, so I would very much like to be brief. I am here tonight with John and Anna Bowen, the owners of one or two Grand Avenue. They are seeking permission to modify an existing special permit, one-ten dash fifteen, as modified. It's been a little bit since our last hearing, so I want to just briefly recap the two things that we're requesting and update you on what has happened since then. First, we're requesting a modification of condition number two of the special permit, which requires that all parking for the dwelling structures be on-site. And second, we're correcting, we're seeking to correct the incorrect lot coverage percentage in the administrative approval of two thousand twenty-one. As to the parking, given the layout of the premises, the parking requirement's not feasible without an increase in the already non-conforming lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. The driveway depth is only eleven feet. Parking is typically eighteen feet. So, anytime someone's parking in the driveway, they're going to be within the road layout regardless. The applicant did obtain a license from the select board to allow for parking space on Grand Avenue on the southern side of this. But because of that condition, they are in violation of the special permit currently. And regarding the lot coverage calculations, the original special permit was granted using a mortgage survey, which had no lot calculations, or no lot coverage calculations on it. And that decision has no mention of lot coverage. It simply ignores that there had been two dwellings on this site since prior to nineteen fifty-nine. The plan that was prepared in twenty-twenty-one for the administrative approval had incorrect calculations. It did not depict or account for the hardscape. It stated that proposed lot coverage is forty-eight percent, which is simply only the structures, which leads us to appear as though we're non-compliant. It didn't show the walkways to the main dwelling, the walkway to the cottage, the patio that existed, all things that were there at that time. We did our best at the last hearing to establish the correct calculations, which we had at fifty-nine percent of lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. Following the last meeting, we did make some changes to the plan. The applicant has revised it to remove the proposed parking area on the western side of the property. That will be removed. This is, removed either way, along Montgomery Court. I think it was determined that this was not within the select board's purview, but certainly within the zoning board's purview. That seemed to be the primary concern of the board, as well as some of the emails that came in. So, we removed that request, and it will be eliminated. As a result, the lot coverage by structures reduced to fifty-four point one by removing that hardscape and increasing the lawn. So, in sum, what we're requesting is removal of a condition that's impossible for us to comply with, with a clear solution that the select board's already approved, and correction of the incorrect calculations. I know that this is an unusual situation. I've never had an application quite like this before. I'm happy to address any questions that the board may have, but I think that we've done our best to comply with what was indicated to us as the board's concerns.
Fourth questions, we'll start with you, Jerry.
I'm satisfied with what was submitted.
Frank?
So, the, just want to be clear, the parking space, which was on the property and intruded into Montgomery Court, is now going to be part of the landscape?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the number of parking spaces on the property is now three.
It'll be one on Grand Avenue, two on.
You have the one, that you have, a selectman gave you a license.
And then two here, yes, correct.
And then they also gave you a license to have the rear ends stick out.
Yes.
They're not in the pave.
And we are going to be requesting a license for this cobblestone apron as well, so if we need to modify.
But that's, that's a landscaping feature. All right, thank you. Otherwise, I'm satisfied. I think he's given us enough information.
Aprons are gonna be twelve, which is back. Might just consider plowing. Thank you.
As you mentioned, Montgomery Court was a sticking point from our, from our last review, so we're heading in the right direction. It's, I guess, the troubling piece here is, you know, in the original submittal, it's just that we had, or the board at that time had poor information, I guess. And as you say, these, this just, it's hard to, you know, kind of come back and say, "Poor information, things happen," and we're still trying to rectify that first.
So, yeah, I mean, the, the lot coverage that was shown in the twenty-twenty-one plan that was approved administratively only reflected the structures. It was, that was the lot coverage by structures, and that's what exists as lot coverage by structures today. But there was existing hardscape there. There was parking areas, there was walkways, there was patio. So, I mean, I, I don't know what we can say other than it was wrong then. And I think what we're doing is actually reducing, by, by what we're proposing, is actually reducing from what was present at that time. So, I think it's an improvement.
So, it was sixty-two point seven percent?
And then, as, as modified, because they took, what they did was, they reduced the entry area here. So, as modified, it would have been fifty-nine percent. And then, what we're actually doing is bringing it down to fifty-four point one percent.
I follow that now. Thank you.
Tony?
No questions.
One follow-up, Mr. Clawor, I'm sorry. The RIN station, do you know when that was, came into existence? It was on plans, and it's, was not previously?
I moved there.
Been there for quite some time.
Okay.
Sometimes, if they're not attached to the house, they're not considered part of the structure, so they're not always reflected on the plan.
Thank you. Public comment. Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed? Need some discussion? Discussion? Frank, Jerry, did you start?
Frank, go ahead.
Well, I was concerned about this project, because I, when I first went down to take a look, I was quite surprised to see the density of development on this lot. I just, it's really overdeveloped in my mind. But we have to deal with what, what is there. I was very concerned about the parking on Montgomery Court. I didn't think we had the really authority to even give it to you, so I appreciate you withdrawing it. As far as the, the request to waive condition number two, I think it was a reasonable request of the board at the time, and I would limit the waiver to the additional parking driveway at the, I guess it's the south easterly corner, and the apron in the front of the house, and there'd be no further parking on the lot. And as far as the request for the fifty-one, fifty-four point one percent, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Jerry?
Frank said it, well.
Yeah, my concern was Montgomery, but that's been removed, so, thank you.
It's gonna be only one spot in front of that front door, right?
Correct.
And that's all on, all on town property?
It is.
Because the line is pretty close to the front stoop.
It is. But that was approved by the select board.
Means we're all liable, I guess.
No, I mean, I think the homeowner still owns the liability for that.
The licenses all require that the homeowner provide liability insurance.
Anything else?
That's it, thanks.
Scott?
So, you have three cars?
We're gonna have three cars.
Three cars?
Get a trolley.
Tony?
Different discussion at different times, but that's actually in the works. Not for this property, but that's in the works.
All right. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close, made by Frank, second by Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. No more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve as the plan shows.
Motion to approve with conditions. Is there a second?
Now, let's be a little clear that we're approving the
Modification.
Modification of lot coverage of fifty-four point one percent, and we're conditioning the removal of condition, excuse me.
Modification.
Modification of condition number two, so that there's a maximum of three cars on the lot, as shown on the plan.
That's a friendly amendment? I'll second that twice. Okay. All those in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Need some findings and conditions?
All right, let's see. Glasses, paperwork. Kevin, you're gonna have to help me with the percentages, because I'm.
I will do my best. I went to law school, because I'm not good at math, Suzanne. If I was good at math, I'd be a doctor.
I'm with you. It's in an RC zone. The flood zone is AE thirteen. There has been the previous zoning, two previous zoning board appeal, special permits, oh-three-seven and twenty-one, and forty, and fifteen. Lot size is thirty-seven thirty. It's on a public road. Now, you can tell me that you're, you're existing and you're proposed, if you would for me, please.
Existing lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking is fifty-nine percent. Proposed is fifty-four point one.
Okay, thank you. Four point one. I think I had two letters in support.
No opposition at the hearing.
No opposition. Oh, there was one. There was one in opposition, an email with pictures from my resident. I think that's all I have for findings.
Testimony from the applicant about removal of the Montgomery side parking. Conditions?
No more than three cars.
For revised plans. Reference the most recent date, please.
No further structures.
No more hardscaping.
More hardscaping.
Don't even buy another cobblestone.
Standard hours of work, need be.
Is the RIN station on the new plan?
It is, yes.
Do we want a date, the revision date?
Revision date is five twenty-four, twenty-three.
Five twenty-four, twenty-three. Okay. Any other conditions?
Heights, just to work with the police department if there's any issues about materials entered near the roadway.
So, Kevin, are you gonna need a further license from the select board for?
We will be requesting a license from the select board for the cobble apron along the corner, but that would be it.
Okay. So, their apparent new preference is that we put in a decision that it's removal unless they grant. So, just so that you're aware.
Okay, makes sense.
Please condition per the select board's request. Anything else? Jump the gun a little bit. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. That's a vote.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and patience, because this one's taken a while.
Are you going on vacation?
I'm not going anywhere. I'm just not working.
Staycation.
Enjoy that.
I'm gonna try really hard.
Next up on the agenda is new hearings, and we have none. Moving on, we have minutes, June twenty-second, June twenty-ninth.
And we are.
Tabling, I believe.
Doing twenty-second.
Tabling June twenty-ninth. Has everyone reviewed the minutes of June twenty-second?
Motion to approve.
Any additions or, any corrections or additions? I give the motion to approve to Scott.
Time, time. I would like to put the chair's letter in, in full. Into the minutes? Please.
That will be included with that addition. Is that now a motion, a motion to approve?
I think that your statement should be included as well.
I think mine was another night, though.
That was last, that was the twenty-ninth, not the twenty-second.
No, the one you read us.
Oh, that's what I'm asking.
That's what he's asking. This is going in.
As well as Richard's email. Precipitated.
The email didn't come before the board as a record. So, I don't think that would be proper.
That's true.
Well, it certainly.
If it's discussed at the meeting, it should be part of the.
It precipitated the whole discussion.
It would be in the next one, though, I think.
The minute.
Not specifically referenced, though.
I referenced it.
Not on the twenty-second, though.
No, that's what I said. It should be on the next one, right.
So, that's, that would, I think, be the appropriate time to include it. So, with the addition of my statement on the twenty-second into the minutes, is there any additional corrections, additions? Give you the motion to approve. Is there a second? That's to Scott. Suzanne, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes of June twenty-second are approved. Board reorganization. Hard to believe it's been a year. We need to elect a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk.
I'll make a motion to keep you as chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anyone else interested in serving as chair?
The beating down the doors.
So, there's a motion and a second to retain me as chair. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain. Want to oppose? I will abstain. That's, we count all members, I believe, correct, Noreen?
I think it is full members that are entitled to vote.
Including associates, members and associates.
Everybody votes, and.
Only, only full, full members can have a position.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, all seven members can vote. Only full voting members can have an office position. That's what my understanding, reading the.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One?
I'm abstaining.
One abstention.
Is it two abstentions or one?
Abstention or no?
I'm a no.
A no, one abstention, five yays. Vice chairman. I'll nominate Scott.
I'll second that.
Want to stay on his?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's if anyone opposed. Any abstained? That's a vote. Would you like to stay on as clerk?
I guess. I'm kind of learning now.
I'll nominate.
Took me a year.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote.
No letterhead changes, guys. Yay!
Number three, board discussion.
I, just real quick, because I wasn't here at our last meeting, so we got determination from the town administrator and council that we're, we're good to go with any potential forty-B review with in-house counsel.
So, yes, we had requested special town council to assist us. There was a meeting with Noreen, myself, and town council, as well as the town administrator. And town council advocated that they believe that they were up to the challenge, that they would be able to service our needs, and that after discussion and them letting, at least myself, as well as Noreen, about the background and how much they have been involved with this potential project coming up, we were satisfied, or, I should say, were satisfied for now that they'd be capable and able to do the project. If that changes, we would then recommunicate or revisit the issue with town administrator and or the select board. But at this point, we're satisfied.
Is that an accurate?
Yes.
Essentially, we're satisfied, though we're not satisfied.
No funding was, yes. And that we would be looking, however, for any assistance we could with either specialists or otherwise in dealing with these projects.
Which Noreen has done.
Yeah, I've reached out to Mass Housing, and they do have a grant program. The application time is kind of tight, in that while you can talk to Mass Housing and discuss it in advance, you can't actually apply with them until the developer submits the application with the town. And of course, once the developer submits the application to the town, the board has to open it for thirty days. So, it's gonna be a very quick startup. So, obviously, all the pieces coming together will be kind of tightly.
Could we authorize the administrator to request that at an appropriate time? I mean, if we, if, if that's not.
That's, that's the, that's the, the current intent, is that we will, I have spoken with Mass Housing.
So, you're prepared to go without our approval?
Oh, what, to have help from them?
Yes.
Oh, I would fully expect to apply for the grant once the application is submitted.
You don't need our approval?
Not that I know of.
Okay, I, I just want to avoid that.
That you would love to have the help.
If need be, my suggestion is we just add it next, to the next meeting as an agenda item, and then just devote, authorize the town administrator.
Yeah, that's my intent, thank you.
I'm shocked that the town allocates zip for a project this size. Just, just saying.
We never had one. So, you know, it may work out that we have to.
Well, towns did say that they felt comfortable.
There's a budget for this.
Yeah.
It's not that they didn't allocate them. There's a budget.
They've hired outside counsel before.
What are they waiting for?
I was told that there, it could be bad information, but there is forty-B expertise at the county level. And I mean, if there's anything at the county level, we should.
Tap into.
Tap into. I think we should. We're paying for it already. You know, and I mean, any information is better than no information.
So, why don't we add an agenda item for next week, on August third, that authorize the, yeah, to authorize the administrator to seek out.
Any efforts.
Any assistance.
Any and all.
That would be helpful to the board for forty-Bs.
Big time.
Anything else on board discussion? Board updates? Kind of hand-in-hand with the previous discussion, but that's all right.
So, we are, we still have a couple of board members that are participating. So we are, we still have a couple of board members that are participating with the planning board members and staff on bylaw updates. There were a few errors that occurred in the recodification project, so part of that will be corrected in, you know, probably this fall town meeting. And there were some issues with the home occupation slash home business, home service business.
Yes.
So the intent is where there's been some concern about, well, do you fall under home occupation or home service, home based service, that they're going to essentially merge those two, so that somebody can't say, well, I'm this instead of that, and try to streamline some of that. So I think Frank and I are work.
Got a sign to kind of tweak that.
And it seems to be rational where the zoning board is pretty much, I think, the only board that uses that section of the bylaw. So what I would like to do is, once we've sort of cleaned that up, send it out to everybody in case you have any further suggestions.
I guess, I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
You go, continue.
I was just wondering, you know, I know we've talked about it in the past, too. I don't want to get off-kilter here, but where are we again as we're heading towards trying to get to a 10% in safe harbor? And we have, I think, a new person in this role that's aggregating these numbers. Are we still 7.2% or can somebody send us that?
I think we have, that has been increased. I believe it is now the.
State has to approve.
The housing individual for Falmouth has their own webpage now, and I believe it's been loaded on to that page. We also, obviously, are in the middle of a bunch of different numbers going on right now, where Liberty Green is coming back slash going to be going forward at some point in time. So those numbers for the SHI are obviously going to change as time goes by, sooner or later type of thing. The town also had a five-year housing production plan. That housing production plan, I believe, expires at the end of this calendar year, so they have an arrangement with a new consultant to correct and update that housing production plan. And having that plan in place is part of what gives you options for safe harbor with the state, depending on new units that come online.
And there have been some that dropped off, that were affordable.
Right.
Like that Esker place, those were dropping off. I think she said six dropped off out of that. You know, they time out.
So in the old days, there was not the requirement that affordable units be maintained in perpetuity.
Perpetuity.
So there were some that dropped off. There have been towns, however, that if there was a zoning circumstance, for example, where you allow an override in density, that you would not normally have, sometimes have sort of pushed back and said, hey, we allowed an override of the density to get these affordable units. So there was some pushback on units falling off because they still don't comply with local zoning.
Isn't there, is there any truth to the, I heard that there were two different lists that essentially have to be combined, because some are on some list and some aren't on the other?
I'm not aware of two different lists. There should be a single list that is the subsidized housing inventory.
I think there is some that the housing authority has control over that is not on the list. I think that might be.
There's, there's. I had heard that there was some that aren't on the list that should be. And then several weeks back, the planning board is threatening to, just want a better term, increase housing by changing accessory apartment rules and perhaps allowing more duplexes. Is any one of our representatives part of that negotiation?
I have not heard about a change to accessory apartments.
Well, there was something in the paper that they were planning on tweaking things, and I don't exactly know exactly what their plan is. So not, that's not any part of what you're.
No, it's not, because what we're doing is zoning bylaw, we're working on the recodification of the existing zoning bylaw. Any changes that are coming originate with the planning board, and we're not going to be involved with them.
And that will be before town meeting.
That'll be a mystery till town meeting.
Till town meeting.
Although they have to hold public hearings, so shouldn't be a mystery.
I look forward to any improvement.
Any other future agenda items other than previously discussed?
But when we had our meeting, whenever it was. Do we treat? In April, we contemplated, instead of having them yearly, having them bi-yearly. When, when did we have that meeting here with all the delicious food that Ashley brought and others? What was the date of that?
March or April.
March or April?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I thought we agreed that maybe biannually would be a better idea, so that would be coming up in October, right? So something that we should be thinking about.
That sounds about right, yeah.
I, I thought that session was extremely productive.
I agree. I think part of the thing is to get suggestions into Noreen, so we can
start seeing if we need outside input or.
Suggestions about who we'd want to invite, just the town planner, zoning administrator with.
As well as suggestions for favor for Ashley.
They do town administrator, so.
Town administrator, sure.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's good.
All right, next meeting will be a week from today, August 3rd, 2023, 6:30 here in the Selectman's Meeting Room. We are adjourned.